Okay, we've taken a little long because we ran a little close on the work session. So if everyone's staying, Commissioner Allen, I'm sorry to have an invitation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are blessed to be here. We thank you for our county. Will we ask your blessing upon our citizens? Will we thank you for this great state, for this great nation? Will we just lift up tonight's meeting? And will we just pray that each and everything that we say and do will be in accordance with your will? We ask your blessing on our decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. It will turn and bless the way of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to call for the Board of Commissioners' meeting, July 18th, 2016. If you look at the agenda, there are no minutes to approve because this is my second meeting of the month. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Ma'am Chairman, this is the closed session of Martha. I do think we need to discuss the school board resolution or their petition for referendum and find out the status update on where we are. Because August 20th is a deadline. So it's, since we are talking about finances and loans, I think that would be closed session.
I was just thinking, the financial board, I'm not sure that's closed. I don't think that's closed session. I think that would be new business, but we can add it to as a number.
A continued continuation, actually, of old business because we've already had public meetings with the Board of Education concerning this.
Okay, so we can add it as number six to old business, schools.
Status of.
Okay, school status.
Status of resolution. Resolution in bond issue.
Okay, so we'll add that under, I remember number seven, under old business, we'll add number six, school, the status of school projects.
Project.
Okay, any adjustments? Now, I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
It's amended. Say it.
Motion has been amended properly second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, we have moved an aye to number number four, delegation. Do we have anyone on the list? Yes, sir. Earl Riker. Can we please take your name and address? I know everybody knows you, Earl, but...
No, I hope not. Earl Ramtree, 226 Molly Road, Sunbury, North Carolina, 4842. I'm used to going to the doctor's office, I'm a doctor too. Now, I just, of course, during this session that I listened to for an hour, I wanted to comment on what I heard. And we made some progress, but I was a little bit, two or three comments. One thing is, I think I told a couple of you commissioners, there's some things that I knew that I didn't want to play hardball with, but I was going to see whether or not that they came in here and I'm willing to make it a lot easier. It seemed like that they agreed so to do what Henry told them, the hell we all told them. But I do have a question, and this probably to the county manager. We laid it out here at the end, said that we were assessing the landfill 10% like the water bill. Do y'all have the power and the ordinance to do that? I thought you had the power to do the water bill, but you've been charging a 10% late fee for the landfill. Do you have the power to do that? I've been told that you do not. And I didn't want to play hardball on this, but can you imagine the, according to the power of legal that I talked to yesterday, 200 people can make a class action lawsuit. I don't want to cause trouble, but I just get tired of coming in here and somebody just constantly fighting this stuff. And we got to look at that. And also, I wouldn't tell, I didn't tell anybody this, I didn't put it on Facebook, I didn't tell anybody because I didn't want my name tied to it. But it has been found out around the county, and I didn't do it, that y'all have no way of collecting the landfill. Is that true?
No.
You can't do that, how do you...
We've been running ads in the newspaper, and it was ran in June, correct? Ms. Anderson?
I just want to hear from her.
The landfill, people who are delinquent, the quarterly landfill that's being advertised in the newspaper.
I mean, how are you legally going to go about collecting it? You can't assess their property, can you?
No, we're in the process of working on that.
You're working on that, but you can't, what, my question is, right this minute, as you and I talk, you cannot do that. No matter how many ads you run in the paper, you cannot do that, is that correct?
Yes, we do not have social security numbers.
So anyway, that is something that y'all are going to have to look at, but when you get in there and get working on this water bill, I want to see it really look good when I come back.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is Chuck Fox.
Chuck Brothers, 485 Front Hill Road in Gates. I like Earl came in and listened to about 45 minutes of the work session, had came up a little late. One observation I want to make, that y'all spent about 35 minutes talking about a percent and a half of your customers that are on a cutoff schedule during that period. 66 of 4500 customers equals a percent and a half of your total customer base, which y'all debated about for about 35 minutes of what to do for the other 98.5% of the customers that pay the bill. I just wanted to bring that up to you. Had a conversation with Natalie the other day, because I was one of those ones last month that got a robo-call, and I did my diligence to pay my bill. I had to go out of town on the 13th to Kansas City, so I made my bill inadvertently thinking that it was coming to Gatesville, not really remembering that it went to Philadelphia. Well, I get a robo-call on that Thursday night, and I look at my wife, and I said, well, I mailed that check on Monday, because I put it in the mailbox at 4:00 in the morning on the way to Norfolk to the airport. So the next day, I found that it had cleared the bank and so forth and so on. But, and finding this out, and I don't think the general public really knows this, that that center in Philadelphia is actually the vendor that the county deals with, which is controlled by Southern Bank. So we are making a payment through the United States Parcel Service that goes to a Southern Bank processing facility that's in Philadelphia. And what raised that question was, there was a printed notice on the back of the check that was computer-generated on the image, not computer-generated on the check. And I went to Dan Askew and asked him a few questions, and then went to Natalie, and she confirmed that that was an image that was produced by the bank that received the check on the 17th. Point I'm trying to make is, I did my part in mail a deal. It had to go to Philadelphia, which Natalie and I both discussed, thought that I was just oblivious to the fact that we're dealing with a company, this North Carolina-based corporation, that we have to remit our payment to Philadelphia to where it's processed. But it took five working days for that payment to be processed, and she didn't waive my fee, but I did my part. So I'll leave that part alone. My next comment, and I hope no one in this audience, the volunteers or as a part of a volunteer agency that provides public safety in this county takes this to heart, but I do want to make a comment, and it's like I told Commissioner Freeman a little bit ago, it's kind of ironic that y'all catch a meeting today, and I had a meeting today at 4:00 in the city of Suffolk. And this is regarding the four cent tax hike that we're going in to subsidize our Gates County Rescue Squad, which all four volunteerism, been a part of volunteering for public safety for 35 years. But in today's world, I hope that you, the county commissioners, put measures in place, just as I have to do for an agency, that the money is being spent for the purpose of which it's been taxed. Meaning, I hope you put in something for accountability and traceability, that the funds are being spent in a manner of which they have been presented for the county to go to the wheel, which is those the taxpayers to come over this horse in. And secondly, as time progresses, I hope that this money of this $350,000, at some point in time, there's a situation that's looked at between what is operating cost and what is replacement of capital needs. And if this money is going toward the purchase of capital improvements, obviously, I don't think that that's a requirement that's going to be in anybody's budget every year to replace whatever resource they need in that. So I say that with the fact that I'm certainly not opposed to paying my part of what this is going toward, because I don't think we could go outside of that box and get it done for what it's being done for, and I know that. So I just want accountability of my tax dollars.
Okay, I have a question. You said accountability, and I know the operating cost of capital improvement, but accountability, and you said accountability and something else.
I don't know what I was going to say. I'll just give you a real scenario, it's tracking. I'll give you a real scenario. Every quarter, I have to meet with the Fire Chief of the City of Suffolk to go over our quarterly needs, and I have to produce to him copies of my expenditures. And the only way I can get my budget money for that quarter is to have that meeting with he as the department head, so he will release the money to finance, or release the request of finance for that check to be cut out. I think I told Commissioner Freeman and I think Commissioner Jordan, my dad was on the town council of the city, of the town of Wailable, when the town of Wailable and Hollins merged to form the city of Nansman for one year, thus creating the city of Suffolk in 1974. And up to that point in time, Wailable Fire Department did not get any money from Nansman County. Best I can remember was about 500 bucks. But when the city was formed, they started getting budget money. Well, in 1975-76, after that started, dad made a comment, he said, at some point in time, the city of Suffolk is going to want to know how we're spending their money. And in 2013, it come to fruition. The city of Suffolk was 40 years old in 2014. It took 39 years. So all I'm saying is, I've got that county for 15,000. I hope we account for 350,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think if you're saying accountability regarding capital expenses and operating costs, not to have capital expenses every year.
I was just making some notations on.
Right.
Those are totally good points. Okay, anyone else? Okay, then we'll go to the ninth delegation, Valerie Riddick, for Gates Partners for Health, the yearly report, and the state of the county report. Good evening. Hey, would you like to introduce your co-board? I can't, they aren't your board.
Yes. Okay. To the commissioners, county manager, good evening. My name is Valerie Riddick, and I'm here tonight to present the Gates Partners for Health report and the state of the county report. And with me, I have Jill Jordan. These are members of the Gates Partners for Health board and, so, and I have Shirley Johnson and Phoebe Laxamira as a support. And in front of me, you should have the hard copies of all my reports. I know you've probably seen them on email, so you may have already had a chance to go over some of them. But I'm going to just do a brief synopsis, I'm not going to, you know, insult you by reading the whole package. The first one is the commissioners' report, from January 2016 to June 2016. And the mission of a Gates Partners for Health is a network of community partners dedicated to promoting healthy lifestyles for all agencies. As you can see, I've listed some of our regular monthly meetings that we have each month. The first one is Project Ladder, and we meet the first Tuesday of each month at 10:00 at the Passaic State County Health Department. In this particular committee, we are involved, we got grant funding to receive funds from systems, materials, supplies, and training. Medication pill box dispensers will also be available soon at Todd's Pharmacy. In the meantime, the citizens can still bring unused medication, old medication here to the sheriff's department and dispose properly at the sheriff's department. We have received any medication lock boxes for citizens to use in the county, and I distribute them through community meetings, events, support groups, and health fairs, and senior clubs. The next one is our cancer support group. We continue to meet the second Monday of each month at 4:00 p.m. at the Merchant Mill Pond State Park. Our agencies, you see them listed, that we partner with Abmar Regional Health Services, Vialt Chuan Community High School, Vialt Chuan Hospital, Gona Chuan Community Health Center, and all the rest of them are listed. Some of the topics that we talked about, estate planning, we had someone come in and talk about Alzheimer's, the dementia care, give us support, and how to manage chronic pain. Now, the group in June, we have a chance to tour the Gates House, and we went over and played bingo with the patients at 3:00 at the Gates House, and we also had dinner. The diabetes support group meets the second Wednesday of each month at 10:30 at the community, Gates County Community Center. Ashley Miller, she's our health educator with Abmar Regional Health Services, and she presents each month on topics relating to controlling and preventing diabetes. Also, a program that's provided by Abmar, by Old City Healthcare Foundation, it's called Gates County Diabetes Program, and is available for our citizens with diabetes. This program is managed by our reddish nurses, reddish doctors, and certified diabetes educators. The classes are held at the Health Department on Fridays, every other Friday, and assessments are done on the alternate Fridays. Our chronic prevention and management council, we meet on the second Wednesday of each month at 2:00 p.m. at the community center, and we're primarily focused on events that provide educational resources, health and living, and healthy foods, and how to deal with chronic illness. So you can see listed some of the events that we've participated in. We have a heart symposium in February, the Mill Pond Day in April, the Health Fairs, Holy Souls Walking Challenge, and providing healthy tips to area churches. Also, the Gates County Farmers Market opened on June 4th, was a great opening, and we do encourage you to go out on Saturday morning from 9:00 to 12:00, and support our vendors at the farmers market. They have local produce, candles, some other items at the farmers market. So, okay, the next one is our Healthy Foods Coalition. We meet on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 1:00 at Edmonton, and this coalition's focused on providing access to healthy foods, choices to communities such as roadside stands, pop-up markets, and our local farmers market. On the next page, the Alzheimer's Support Group, that is the fourth Tuesday of each month at 2:00 at the Merchant Mill Pond Business Center, and Lynn Razor, she's in charge of that particular support group. Every other month, we have the Adults and Agent Task Force Committee that meets on the second Friday at 9:00 at the Gates County Department Social Service. And also, we receive updates from Diabetes Rehab and the Gates House. Our Behavior Health Committee is up and running. I know the last time I reported, we had just established the Behavior Health Committee. They meet the third Wednesday every three months at 2:00 at the Gates County Department Social Service. And the agencies provide services of Trillion Recovery Innovation, Abmar Commission for Area Agency on Aging, the Gates County Schools, and Abmar Regional Health Services. Then, of course, we have our Gates Partners for Health Executive Board and our Regular Board meeting on the last Wednesday of each month at Gates County Department Social Service. And the other item is just, every three months, we have our Healthy Caroleanis Staffing Meeting, Abmar Regional Health Services Team Meeting, and the Healthy Foods and Tobacco-Free Coalition Pitch Meeting together. So this is my report based on, from June to, from January to June of 2006. The next item in your packet, you have the save the date, and this is for the unveiling of the 2016 Comprehensive Community Health Assessment. It would be on Wednesday, August 24th, at 10:00 at the Merchant Mill Pond State Park. We ask you to please put this on your calendar. At this time, they will be in to give us the presentation on the status of community health assessments from the small sessions and discussions that we had early in the year. Okay, on your right-hand side, if you go to the state of the county health report 2015, and as you remember, I came to you in D-Summer with the 2014 state of the county report. So now, this is the 15th. So we all aware of what the state of the county report is. The Scotch report is a supplement report to the community health assessment, and we do it in the years that we don't do the community health assessment, which next year, 2017, I will not do the Scotch report because community health assessment report we do. Again, our mission statement is listed, so I'm just going to give you a brief synopsis of some of the things that is included in the report. Our health priorities identified in the 2013 community health assessment, the first one is cancer, was identified, and we partner to have secure two cancer-focused partnerships to provide three educational forums targeting prostate and or breast cancer. And our target number of individuals to reach for awareness is 450. Our chronic disease management covers respiratory issues, cancers, diabetes, heart disease, obesity, and overweight. And we focus on also increasing the number of partnerships to three in the underserved townships providing screenings and chronic disease prevention. And the third is behavior health, substance abuse and mental abuse. And as you can see, that is very important from our community health action. Okay, the next page, I'm not going to detail, that's pretty much the Gates County at a glance. This is our numbers that you see, our leading cause of death in Gates County for 2014. As you can see, cancer, heart disease, chronic lower, respiratory diabetes, and Alzheimer's disease. And then, at the bottom, chart shows the number of deaths in Gates County from the disease. So you can see that cancer rated as number one cause of death in Gates County. Okay, and the other report, you can just read that from yourself, is the deal with the mobility and mortality rate for Gates County. Okay, on your next page, our local priority issues to address to the chronic disease prevention and reduction. And as I stated already, the county support group, you know, we continue to meet, we do have ongoing projects going on, and we're looking at this year helping to co-sponsor the Pink Power Luncheon in October for breast cancer line. Also, we're partnering with our local barbers and beauty salons to provide them with educational materials for their customers. This way, you can get the health issues starting to be taught in the barber shops and the beauty salons. And during this event, we want to honor and recognize our local barbers and beauty shops. Our chronic disease prevention and management, the Gates County Diabetes Support Group, which you've already heard about that already, and they meet monthly, and a diabetes program that is funded by Old City Foundation. In November of last year, we had the rethink diabetes event at the Faith Outreach Church in Gatesville. There was 35 in attendance, and the event was sponsored by Vialt Gona Chuan Hospital, Gona Chuan Community Health Center, Abmar Regional Health Services, and Gates County Diabetes Program, and Body Alliance. The next one was the Merchant Mill Pond, that was a kickoff for our Holy Souls Walking Challenge, allowing citizens to sign up to churches to reddish for the Holy Souls Challenge, which would run from July to November. The Gates County Farmers Market, as I said, they opened last year, May the 30th, and it provide fresh produce from local and area farmers, great baked goods, health education material, and hand crack products. The Healthy Tips for Families, that's provided, that was provided by the East Mountain More Coalition, which go out every three months to 56 local churches, and the mailing included letters to the passive Gates Partners for Health upcoming events. And the churches use the Healthy Tips, it's signed in for the church bulletin, the church miss letter, and or announcement period. The Ninth Annual Family Fund and Fitness Day for last year, we did not have due to the weather. This is the one from the Ninth, the Ninth Annual one, which was October of 2014, and, I'm sorry, 2015, due to the weather, we did not have that, we had to cancel. So we are in plan and working on that for this year, October 1st. In February of this year, we had a heart health symposium, and that was held at Buma Baptist Church in Sunbury, and the main focus area was prevention and management of heart disease. That event, we had 72 in attendance, along with the support and sponsors of our vendors. And then, our behavior health, substance abuse, and mental health services, as you can see, listed some of the projects that have come underneath the behavior health. They have anonymous, anonymous people in Gates County on February 11th, 2015. We participated in the Trillion sponsored luncheon of Compassion Reaction on August 25th, 2015, in Littleton City. And also, the Rachel's Challenge. And this, the Rachel's Challenge is a program that is currently being participated in with the middle school and the high school. Okay, and recovery interventions, they meet weekly at the Gates County Down East Rehab Center on Fridays from 10:30 to 11:30. And of course, again, the Alzheimer's group, you see that's listed, and meet the fourth Tuesday, and our Project Ladder, we talked about that already. The last part is very important to this report, the emergent issues of Gates County. And these are some of the things that we feel as Gates Partners for Health, that we want to focus on upcoming for this upcoming year. Providing education awareness of outcome parent and prescribed prescription medication due to the higher number of cases reported in Gates County. Increase in the suicide rates reported in Gates County. The lack of fresh fruit and vegetables at the only two local grocery stores, mail only one. Incentive to citizens to use the farmers market when open for the season. Establish special dates for the farmers market for transportation to get service. Transportation to non-medical acquaintance or senior population. The healthcare costs associated with patients accessing non-emergency healthcare. The lack of community participants at sponsored events by Gates Partners for Health. The lack of established senior center in Gates County. The lack of affordable and subsidized housing for seniors and younger adults. The lack of programs for the youth at the community center that do not require a fee for the youth. And how to get our area churches more to participate in outreach projects with the community. And the last, to continue to establish groups like Friends of Rachel at the school level to show kindness and compassion to one another. So as you can tell, this is my report for the state of the county report for Gates County for 2015. The other document you have received is the letter from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services showing the accreditation for our 2015 Scotch report. And this is good news, so if you can look at the letter, and also on the second page, you have a list of the accreditation standards, and you showed, you can see that we met all of our standards with this county. So I presented my report. Do you have any questions?
I would just like to let everyone know about the excluding causes of death, cancer will underneath the state of Florida. We'll, you know, our averages below that. Of course, the chronic disease, chronic lower, respiratory diabetes, and Alzheimer's, we're above the state of.
Yes.
So we've got a lot of work to do.
Yes.
Thank you for your work, and keep up the good work.
Okay, and I'd like to say, thank you very much for the funds that you provide to Gates Partners for Health each year for your budget year, and you know you've already spent um, dispensed for this year for two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, um, year. Thank you very much.
We do, we do appreciate that, of course. I'd like just to add too, and I didn't know if y'all had touched on the dental situation, and particularly in our area.
The dental?
Dental.
No, sir, but that's.
Well, with the regional, and maybe someone else in here probably knows that, we have through Jerry Parks and Regional Health, uh, and the dentists that are in our region have provided free dental services at various times. And we're thinking about putting it more so in Elizabeth City as well than we have in Derek County, and, uh, I think we had an entire weekend, is that right? And, and treated, uh, uh, I believe we had some eighty dentists, and then all of their, um, their assistants for two days.
And of course, we also have the school dentistry that has offices at East Carolina and Elizabeth City and Ahoski that we can make people aware of, that they can get, I guess, reduced cost, um, for their services.
I'll be right back. We'd like to pull them in to Gates County and see if some of the dentists will come here and buy our services.
Well, um, at our family funded fitness day for this year, on October the first, uh, we've already signed up for East Carolina's school, limited to be on site that day, to come, be, be able to get our information to our citizens, because we have several hundred citizens coming through, if they get a packet with information, then hopefully that we can take care of some of our dental in, uh, issues in Gates County.
You said East Carolina?
Yes.
Dentistry?
Yes.
So we, we are, we are allowed to go to move in that direction with East Carolina?
Well, it's, it's the one, it's Ahoski.
There's one in Elizabeth.
They can come as a vendor.
And one in Elizabeth City as well.
Okay.
And they can come as a vendor to set up as a pack.
And in, in the past, we have something, what I've called part of our affiliations with, like, Alamo.
But they don't provide many services.
Right, and I, I'm curious to know.
I don't know if the, you could talk to them, like, when they do screenings for the preschool or, uh, pre-K or whatever, whether they can bring someone in to kind of check those children, you know?
The, the school provides a little bit.
Do they?
Okay, right, the gentleman everybody.
Yeah, just early prevention sometimes can be very helpful. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reddy. Does anyone, um, else have a question?
Great for four.
Okay, so we look forward to seeing you on next month, on the twenty-fourth, at ten o'clock.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I believe that's only our nicest delegation we have to this evening. We'll move on, there's no administrative reports, because it's the second meeting, no public hearings, old business, and that is the EMS contract.
This, this is a contract to establish service. We've been kind of running on the old one, and the only change that was made was the allocation, where you say twenty-five thousand, now it says three hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Uh, I'll open up a discussion.
Yes.
I'm Chairman, I, and board, yeah, I've looked it over, uh, the contract looks pretty standard, uh, there are a few things in there that I may would like to see worded different. But, uh, one area that I think we really need to make a change in, um, since we are allocating three hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, on the second page where it states that, it says the current allocation is three hundred and fifty-three dollars, one, six, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, which shall be evaluated for increase annually between the department and the county manager, must be approved by board commissioners. I think, you know, when we look at accountability, uh, operating cost, uh, what it's gonna take, uh, year by year, I think we also, we should make that statement, it will be evaluated for increase or decrease, uh, annually between the department and the county manager, because, you know, as it's, you know, one of our citizens has pointed out, you know, we're not gonna be buying cap, we're not gonna have capital expenses this year to buy, uh, new equipment every year, and we do need to have some kind of input in making a decision on whether or not, you know, the funds are utilized in, in complete agreement, uh, with, with the county's opinion. And I know there's always room for negotiation and there's room for debate, but I think that if we add increase or decrease, uh, it does not take away that, you know, it could increase, but certainly if there's justification, uh, for decreasing, I think, you know, we should have that latitude in there, not just one way.
It's not in there one way. Right now, it reads, the allocation shall be evaluated annually by the department and the county manager, and must be approved by the commissioner. It doesn't say the increase or decrease it.
Yeah, it does not.
It's under one, so the copy of the last one, it doesn't have the word increase or decrease in there.
No, we have increase now.
But it can be in to decrease, increase, or it can be for the, um, or it can be for the, um...
Evaluate annually.
Evaluate annually, yeah.
I think that would be, and I had highlighted that.
Well, I, I, let's see, I don't think I have a problem with that, uh, but it's gonna be evaluated annually.
And leave an increase if you, but I had highlighted that too, I didn't let that just, it was one way through.
Yeah. So it's what we're gonna have evaluated annually. That was my only comment on, like I said, there's some, one of, some of the other things that I know is available, um, it goes under the third paragraph under witness, with it, it says the department agrees to operate within a guideline established in the Gates County EMS system plan. Uh, I'm sure that's available, where is that, that's on the website?
No, that's titles that, there's, that they have, and then we also work with Billy.
So Billy is the system administrator, he, he, he alone with the county manager and the medical director approves a system plan that's submitted to the state office of emergency medicine every four years, I believe is how often it's renewed, this October.
And in that for, like, if we are in a natural disaster or something?
No, that's on the next page. Yes, that, that might, there should be two staff, but we'll get back to what's up like that in a minute.
Getting, getting back to the, uh, evaluation annually, we're gonna put a date on the contract.
All right, that's why I was glad, fine.
But we're also gonna have a budget to go over with them and start in, what, April? So should we, should we consider, we're entering into the contract this date, but should we also put what month that evaluation will be? Because we're gonna need to know what the numbers are for budget as well as possible change.
Well, evaluated annually, well, each, just from here.
But this will be signed after, 'cause if you'll notice, the next to last paragraph that says that they can terminate it.
Hundred eighty minutes.
So they would send, so that could be sent to us before, and we, so that would be done before budget time. So this is an agreement that would be signed each year, and that current allocation would have to be built in as of July first, once the budget is approved.
But we need the information if I want their, to look over prior to that.
And they receive this information the same time at all departments, too.
Any additional comments or questions?
The EMS, they did request that it be under the, on the second page, the second paragraph. We had requested two staff crews, they had requested one staff crew. Current FEMA got it.
We requested one.
The past, we've always requested two staff crews, and this year they've requested one.
FEMA has requested.
No, EMS requested that it be replaced with one staff crew.
Well, we've got two now.
Right, and that's, that's something that we just need to clarify which you prefer, because the county hasn't requested two, and they've requested one.
The reason we put one in our contract was to put it in line with the presentation that was made and the budget agreement that was made. It was specified in that agreement that it was one truck twenty-four hours a day. So we just bringing the contract in line with what was talked about during those negotiations.
Well, you think the county of our size, you know, wanting a staff crew, probably be sufficient for there sometime, I would use three, but, uh, but normally, uh, if you look at the, uh, the average curves, or if you think that's gonna, uh, be one, I, I think that should be changed at all.
Well, if it, this is talking about when we have a disaster. And I, you know, when we had the, um, if we have a hurricane or a major blizzard, we have generally tried to have a rescue squad on each side of the county, so that cut down on response time. We have one station in Ure, the one in Sunbury, because it's just to make it a little bit more doable.
Also, as well as access, flood it, boot, treat them.
The purpose of that language in the contract is to be able to give the FEMA money if, if the state of emergencies declared and the FEMA disasters declared. Whenever we came to this, on the contract clear previous to this, the reason that language was put in there is because we weren't, we didn't receive any IR any money, because the contract didn't read the right way, and so we...
Are you saying that, now, again, what we're, what we have in front of us says two, and that's what was in the presentation, what you're saying?
And the contract that was sent in had one in there from my office, just trying to bring it in line with what we could talk about through, through the budget.
So the two, the two in the document that we're looking at would make IR money available?
That's the purpose of our statement.
But it's whether it's one or two.
Yeah, no matter what it says, one or two, it makes the money available.
Because it's in there.
Because it's in the contract. What the number of the paragraph there is saying is that if you ask us to staff right now on yours, you ask us to staff three ambulances, then your, the county is responsible for that, the cost of that third truck.
Till we get re-.
Until we get the FEMA money. Is basically what that paragraph is saying, and that's what FEMA wants to see, so that they can say, yeah, Gates County, we're gonna give you the money, so you pay the EMS.
Well, wouldn't they do it, I mean, you know, we've got eleven thousand, nine hundred, or twelve thousand, eleven hundred citizens, we've got, uh, Perfect County, twenty-two thousand, I mean, what, what they got in there, you know, is, is...
They don't have a contract, their county employees?
Yeah. I mean, it's, I understand what you're saying, I mean, you know, it'd be nice to have one of, uh, all four sides of the county, northern, part, southern, eastern, west, but, um, and like I said, this is only gonna be...
If they've declared emergency.
Yeah, but, you know, if, if we have a hurricane or tornado, and, uh, you all determine that you only need one, you know, still like to declare an emergency, but we don't wanna get in a position where we gotta fund you for two, just because we got it in the contract.
But it's not, it's not left at our discretion, the county has to make the decision. County has to declare the emergency.
Storm, if I'm reading this correctly, the one staff twenty-four seven after running emergencies, or routine transport, that's...
We bring on the extra truck, right? Doesn't affect, doesn't, we don't ever use the one staff nine-one-one truck to support the non-emergency traffic.
And for your purposes, this is private murder for FEMA to, for their procedure and their reimbursement.
I, I don't think this is a big issue.
So if we put one in there and we need to, FEMA would...
As long as FEMA, as long as an emergency declared and FEMA gives you money, then we could recoup our money. In the past, we weren't able to recoup.
In that, I recognize it, one, that if we put in two, they would...
Doesn't matter if it says four, five, what it says, that block had to be there in order for us to get the money for that.
Okay, so we're pleasuring the group, if we want to get changes, one.
Yes.
Anything, any other comments? Okay, so do we need a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the EMS contract with the noted changes, uh, which shall, shall be evaluated, and, yeah, evaluated annually, and also with the other change of where the rest of the EMS services in excess of one staff crew for longer than twelve executive hours.
Okay, our motion has been made, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second in discussion. Hearing none, we will, um, vote on the contract with the EMS, with the noted changes, that evaluation will be done annually, and that we, with FEMA, there'll be one staff crew for longer than twelve executive hours. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Yeah, we have approved with those.
Thank you. Debate, you leave today to debate.
Okay, the next item, I'll have sole farm ordinance draft on review. This back piece is making her way to the front. Thank you, this back piece.
Um, this is just a recent metal for review, we'll have to schedule for a public hearing at a later date in time. This item was sent back to planning board for additional review and comment. Um, we received some interesting comments and some good comments, um, mainly regarding, um, adding information into the section about buffers along against wetlands. Um, so we, if you look under section F, items three and four, we did add two statements to identify additional buffers against, um, wetlands, um, just to protect wetlands, so that information was added. And those were the main comments that we did receive and did have, um, so then the planning board did address those items.
Okay, well, thanking for the work of the planning board, um, they, I know they've done that due diligence, they've worked hard, um, we do appreciate that, and your input as well. Uh, do we have questions?
On that, um, number three there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that, when we're talking about wetlands, we know the dean is gonna have their rules, do you know what their rule is, eh? You said a hundred and fifty feet?
Um, I don't think, I don't think that they have, I know that they have, um, regulations in terms of, um, it can't be, I think there's like fifty feet next to a wetland, so this is only increasing it by another additional hundred feet, um, just because sometimes wetlands can change a little bit.
Yeah, I was just curious if it was...
I believe it's...
If it was in line with what they're gonna suggest.
Yeah, is, I was, it's gonna be a little bit more, um, but not much more, I mean, additional hundred feet on top of what they would require. And don't quote, don't quote me, on the fifty feet, I believe it's fifty feet.
So it would be an additional fifty feet, where is it?
Additional hundred.
Okay.
Additional hundred.
Well, it says, of course, it's in addition of a sole farm is locating on a property adjacent to the property that identified... Well, it says, of course, in addition of a solar farm is locating on a property adjacent to the property that identified at the time or during the due, as heavy wetlands and a buffer of one hundred and fifty feet shall be required. Now, we've already said, uh, now the two that are minimum setback distance of a hundred feet from all property lines shall be required on the solar collecting in any zoning district. So if we're gonna, we've got a hundred foot buffer already. And you only need another fifty foot, make a hundred fifty foot, so if you put a hundred fifty foot, all of a sudden now you're requiring two hundred fifty feet. If you, if you read it as a hundred and fifty foot by itself. So what I'm saying is you only need another fifty foot because you've got a hundred foot buffer already built in on the collectors.
The wetland wouldn't necessarily be on property boundary lines. It could be in there. Could be in the center of it or off.
So you're saying if it's, if it's within the solar farm itself?
Now, if, if the wetland is on an adjacent property and say it's forty feet from the property line, ten feet, you say, add that to be a hundred and ten feet from the property line. Instead, if it's a hundred fifty from the wetland, from the wetland on the property on the adjacent property.
Alright, I understand that. But I was just thinking that if it was at the edge of the property.
It would be a hundred fifty from the property line.
Alright, so you're getting off the property line versus.
Right, a hundred fifty from the wetland, where would, where would the wetland happen to live?
If it's a hundred foot inside a piece of property and, you know, it would not.
You wouldn't use the wetland as, as the starting point for measuring, not the property line.
Yeah.
But where Deaner needs the wetlands to begin.
Well, is that gonna be where the, the solar panels start, a hundred fifty feet?
From outside the wetlands?
Right, alright, you've got the wetlands, alright, you've got the wetlands here. Here's the solar farm, okay, these are wetlands. Alright, so you're saying from here, you gotta have a hundred fifty feet for the solar panel? Is that what we're saying?
Hmm, no. If the wetlands are here, and this is the property line, it would be a hun, like, say like this is the edge of wetlands, it would be a hundred and fifty feet from the edge of the wetland.
Alright, well, where is my hundred foot setback at for my solar panels? Does my hundred, my solar panel start here?
At one hundred fifty one.
At the one hundred and fifty feet because it's more than the one hundred feet from the property line.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm saying is that, um, in reality, you're only requiring a, an additional fifty feet because you, we're requiring to have a hundred foot setback on that, under item two.
Well, that setback under item two is from the property line, not the, not the wetlands line. So they're protecting the property line by a hundred feet and the wetlands by a hundred fifty.
Right.
Well, I think, I think we're saying the same thing, but I, okay, as long as, as long as we're not requiring two hundred fifty.
Hmm, no, it wouldn't be two hundred and fifty, right.
Then the overlapping, right, measurement.
Let's see, Army Corps of Engineers allow any trading, if you will, for those wetlands for another area?
Whether they require, I understand what you're saying, like, if you encroaching this wetland and you, and you mitigate somewhere else. Um, I do not think so. I've never heard of them doing it. Um, pretty much with the Army Corps and wetlands, if it's a wetland, then it's pretty much protected. Um, so they don't allow mitigation to occur in another area.
What in there?
Yes.
Alright, I've got major concern. Under the decommissioning plan, I am aye from Jake.
Under.
Uh, it's gonna be on, on the second page.
And you have problems with?
Um, you know, we, one of the things that we asked, um, in the meeting was that, you know, to work with the companies that were gonna be coming to the county, the solar company, solar farm companies, and that they had experience with this, not to be an advisor, everything, to certainly get their opinions and, and, uh, kind of present them to us so that we can kind of make the best decision, uh, not putting it all on the planning board. The bond and letter of credit, I, I've done a little research on that. And, and it is, you know, to provide a bond for that type of investment, uh, or a letter of credit. It is, it's almost asking the company, uh, to put up such a large amount of money that it's really not feasible, uh, to operate because you're having to hold up or to invest so much cash, you can't have that cash flow. And, um, it seems feasible and, and what, I don't know if this is totally in line with, with what other, uh, counties and states are doing, but it was some way that in lieu of having a bond or a letter of credit, that we would have a, uh, a legal document on the, on the property that says failure to initiate decommissioning within the hundred eighty days would constitute, uh, foreclosure of a property to the county. And the county will, will initiate a sale of the property with requirement that, that decommissioning has to be done. In other words, the property, if you don't decommission it, uh, it's like the county holding a lien on the property instead of, uh, having to put up a bond, whereas if you don't decommission it, then the county has a right to sell the property, uh, and also, uh, the salvage value of the metal that's within the, within the farm. And I think that's one of the, the arguments that the solar industry, uh, try to make to us is that there's a lot of metal, uh, copper that's underground, uh, it has significant value. And if they did, uh, uh, abandon the property, that metal would be sold. But we would need some kind of legal document, uh, whether incorporated within the deed or whatever to say that failure to decommissioning within a certain length of time, uh, would constitute a lien upon the property. You know, I, we'd have to get the lawyer to see how that would be, uh, uh, worded. But, uh, something that would give us the opportunity to put property up for sale, to have access to all the valuable salvage metal that's within, within ground. And, uh, we could get the decommission done that way.
But how can we sell land that has been leased?
Well, if it was leased, if it's leased, then, uh, the lease owner would have, you would have a, a statement from them, would require them to have a statement, uh, that, uh, if the property, if they don't decommission, uh, that the metal, it would be a bounty on them as well. I mean, you know, if they don't, uh, if they lease the property and they don't, uh, put in their, or, or, or commit to decommissioning themselves, then that would be one of the requirements of the ordinance.
So it's going to fall back on the landowner?
On the landowner as well. Don't, in a lease.
But you can't dictate what's in a lease between two private individuals as county commissioners?
Well, uh, if we've got, we're not gonna dictate to it. If they don't need the ordinance, uh, the requirements for ordinance, then, you know, they couldn't enter into this lease, uh, this type of agreement. This is, they, they, they would have, this is, is, is the type of security that would have to be, uh, provided in order to ensure decommissioning. It's not, uh, you know, in order to enter this lease, that's what the ordinance say. We're not dictating, you know, what they have to do, if they don't want to do it, then they need to go to somebody else and give another lease, who's willing, a lease from them who's willing to do it, or they need to purchase the property. You know? And I would like to see that presented to the, uh, solar industry, especially the two that we have here, to see how, what their take is on that. And I, I, I'm not in favor of this bond or whatever because it's, that's just not feasible. And we've gotta look at some of the alternative. I don't know what they've come up with, but certainly I think there's a meeting ground on what can be done.
Does, does G, mister? Uh, does G cover some of that, the sign say? The sign say we're from a party responsible for completing the decommission plan and acknowledging such responsibility?
Or Dean?
J, J is George. I, I, G.
On the next to last page.
Well, it does under the, um, it does, but that would pertain to all of the other terms.
It's happened back.
Yeah, I, yeah, all the terms that, above it. Basically, G's saying that they're, they're going to sign a document that speaks to A through F.
Okay, it's already just been done.
Right.
I'm afraid what we see in fifteen years from now when this, this solar panel is Hawaii, these farmers that are building this, the leasing of property, they're gonna walk away, they're gonna say, I'm gonna declare bankruptcy, I've got everything, I'm gonna, y'all can have it, good luck.
Well, I don't, under, uh, what Billy's saying, um, you know, once a piece of property is permitted.
Well, property will never be in good.
But once a piece of property is permitted, you know, the sort of, the cat's out of that. You know, and so the ordinance needs to address, um, all the issues that we can think of, and that we can learn of in the beginning, so I can appreciate that. I have, I, I've done some research and made some phone calls. And, uh, spoke with Duke Energy, again, about the copper that's underground. And, uh, that was a gentleman who was here at, at the meeting. And, uh, he says, from just a financial standpoint, if for some reason there was a, uh, a stoppage and a need for decommissioning, that whoever is the owner of that property, the copper, the tubing, um, the solar panels and everything, they're not, whoever's the owner of it, they're not going to want to leave it back with all this too valuable. Even thirty years from now. It's just, it just, from pure salvage point, it's too valuable to leave it. And, uh, and the cost of taking it up is gonna be nothing compared to what it is putting down because they're gonna, they're gonna take a, a backhoe or an excavator and they're, and here's gonna, you know, if they're not gonna use it, here's, pull that copper up, they don't care what it looks like, you know, when they get it up, the, the copper's copper. So the, the, the value of, of what is there above and below the ground is, is a considerable, is a considerable amount of money. If, you know, at twenty-five percent of the project, I was recently told that that bond would cost over a million dollars and to carry a bond on, on a property like you're talking about, that, um, over the Sunbury area. And, uh, and I did, you know, there was some questions that were, uh, spoken here. It's not about decommission, but I did want to, to, uh, to speak to those. One of them was about retention bonds and that if, uh, and again, this is, is what I was told, that, you know, if Deaner required a temporary retention bond, they put a, a temporary retention bond in. And most likely that would be a situation if it was near, um, somewhere, lands or somewhere. If they require current retention bond, Deaner isn't chalk to that. I mean, they'll have to do what Deaner says. They're the, uh, the authority. I spoke with Sun Energy Morning and they were not opposed to a more significant buffer increase to the point of, uh, if you put, we put it in the ordinance. If we want a buffer there where we never see, when we're riding down the road, if we never see it, they will put a significant buffer there where it'll never be seen. So I asked, uh, when I inquired about the fifteen hundred acres, I asked the question, and I asked this question to, to parties with the same, uh, both of them were Sun Energy. And on the, on the fifteen hundred acre scenario, um, that we've heard about, they're gonna use roughly seven hundred acres of that property. And that because I believe wetlands are already involved there. But they're purchasing the fifteen hundred acres, I believe, because that's what is there, that's what the timber company owns, that's, they won't sell it all or nothing. But they, uh, they actually said between six hundred and seven hundred acres of that, so I put down seven hundred acres. So those are some things, some notes that I made. And I will say that I was told this also, and I was told this by Kenny Hubble. I told him I was not very happy with the Sugar Run solar farm, like, the way it looks, how close it was put to that resonance there, um, there's no buffer or anything. And I told him that was an eyesore and I didn't, didn't like the way it looked. And he told me that he would go back there and make some corrections, buffer it, and, uh, and even move the, the property line there where the resonance is on the corner. That even moved that back farther away from there. And that, I mean, that, that said a lot to me about.
Have they done?
Did you answer the question?
I didn't say anything.
Well, I'm sure, yeah. But I mean, I'm, I'm here on record saying, calling his name and saying that that's what I was told, so. Now, we, we don't have the, it is built, and this is part of the cat out of the bag that I was referring to earlier. So we want to capture all these things so that we can have it done right in the beginning. So, um, I mean, as, as we go forward with the ordinance, I, I'm on record as saying, I was told that. So we'll find out if, if we, but it, you know, they're not gonna do it unless we request it. And we haven't requested, maybe that's, you know, would be coming, uh, down the line. Uh, I'm sure he'll, uh, he has a representative here tonight, and I'm sure, uh, that he'll be told that I made that statement in public. And maybe we'll hear back from him, um, before we even have to ask. Uh, but, uh, I wanna ask, um, Jennifer a question, this back piece. When we issue a permit, and I'll talk about the one in, in Sunbury. When we issue a permit, how many acres does that, do you recall? Does the one at Sugar Run Road?
Uh, no.
Okay. But anyway, when, when we issue a permit, did we not? Was that before her time?
Yes.
It wasn't, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you know, going, we'll say going forward, let's say it's a forty acre property. One that doesn't exist, no permits on this one, it's just one and possibly in the future. Does our permit say that it will start here and end here? Or do we, do we talk about placement? Do we require them to have a, a, a mapping of that property? Where, where the most outside?
We do require a site plan. Um, the process is that if it's a, if it's a facility that's located, um, within, in the A one, because in the A one it requires a special use permit. It's allowed by right in the industry. So if it's a project that, that's required, that requires a special use permit, we do require it to go to TRC, which is a technical review committee. They have to submit a site plan, it goes to the sheriff department, planning, building, um, fire, the tax department, water, um, DOT, and so, can you say someone on the contractor? Solomon Moore, I was forgetting, I'm forgetting somebody else because there's like nine agencies it goes to. Um, these individuals review it, they make comments, um, compile the comments, make sure that everything matches everybody's regulation. We give the comments back to the individual. We give the comments back to the individual, to the company. And then after it goes through that process, that report is then given, along with a staff report, to the board of adjustment for the special use permit to be issued. If it's allowed by right, it only goes to TRC and then it goes for the building permit, provided that it is passed through TRC.
And that's under page one?
Well, that's for, that's for.
Industrial.
That's for any, any solar farm facility. It goes to TRC, then on the special use permit board, straight to the building permit. So we do require a site plan to show where things are, show where the setback, the property lines, the setbacks, where the first panel's going to be and all this, and show how it's laid out. I did want to address a couple of things that I heard. The twenty-five percent bond that's in the ordinance, that was not recommended by the planning board. The planning board initially recommended fifteen percent. When I came back, this was one of the changes that had been made and sent back to us saying that it was considered by y'all at twenty-five percent. And in terms of the pullout with the decommission, we're talking about panels and mechanics that are brought into the site by heavy eighteen wheeler trucks. So when it's going to be decommissioned, the owner is going to have to experience a lot of costs upfront. Because this isn't something that you can pull up out of the ground and just throw in the back of your car and take it to a recycling facility. This is something that's going to have to be carted off the property in some kind of heavy mechanism, weight. So it's not something that's going to be easy, easy to just go in and dispose of. The retention bond, we did come to the planning board last month and ask, what were you looking for in terms of a retention bond? Because the company, we don't have a staff engineer. So we're kind of, I'm not going to say clueless, but we don't know the ins and outs of how to write something that's going to be effective and enforceable for a requirement retention bond. Because we don't have, that is not our skill set. Not my skill set, and that's not some, you know, the skill set for some of the members of the planning board. And the last thing, for the seven hundred acres that's going to be used out there in Black Mingle, that's not what was reported to the Energy Commission in their initial application for the Black Mingle Medical Center site. They were going, they requested that it was going to be thirteen hundred acres. Now, maybe since they've submitted their application, they have found out there, there are wetlands on the property, and that has significantly reduced what their application was. But their initial application was for the whole thirteen, thirteen hundred acres.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Heard the comments, the other comments as well. But there's a few things we need to think about. First of all, we've got three of our solar farms in Gates County. We've got two in Sunbury, we've got one.
Wyden.
Wyden. And this ordinance is basically going to affect the one, this proposal on Bosn Road. Because those, the other ones are already there. When we put this ordinance in place, it's, it's not retroactive.
Correct. The one on Bosn Road has been pulled. It is no longer on the table. That's, there would have to be a complete resubmitment.
So basically, what we're doing here, we're saying, we don't want, we don't want no other solar farms in Gates County. Just want three. But what we're also saying to our little citizens is that, hey, we don't, we're not going to allow you to do with your land what you want to do. We've got some people in Gates County that would love to have the opportunity to negotiate with the solar industry as to whether or not they want to sell their land. It's, it's their right. Now, what we want to do is we just want to protect being able to not have it as a hazard to the county, but we don't want to overkill. And that's what we're talking about, overkilling here. This twenty, this bond and this letter of credit is not feasible. It's, it's not, it's not workable. It's not conducive for a company to move forward into, into an agreement. So we need to find out. Like I said, we've given some options here, but we need to find out what the other counties, what they have done. And, and, no, Gates County is not the other counties. But we also want to be fair to our citizens in the county who want the opportunity to invest or to make, have some revenue come in based on selling their property or leasing or whatever they want to do. So I, I think that needs to be addressed. I certainly would not be in favor of, of this decommissioning bond requirement as it stands. I think, I think it's overkill based on what I've found now. I've talked to insurance companies, and basically, it's only, you know, their experience with it is, is not to this extent. I think we need to change that. And the other issues that's been raised, you know, I think is discussion, but that's the significant thing that I see right now, if we need to come to a agreement on.
Ms. Badte, as you were being with the planning board, did you run across the reality position plan of the planning?
Yes. We have, this, for example, this is one ordinance that is from Washington County, which is a little further up the coast. They require a decommissioning plan. They have one section, decommission and abandonment, it has a basement.
Could they address with a bond or just a agreement?
They do have in here the terms and amounts of any proposed surety or performance bond or certified funds which are, which an applicant proposes to provide in satisfaction of the following paragraph, and then there's a paragraph about the surety and performance bond.
But no specific amount?
Is that the only one that you've seen on the planning?
This is the only one that I have in my folder. It's not the only one that I've seen, but I think that's the, I think they got separated. I think that's the only one I have in here.
Why don't we, when I say we, the planning board and yourself, why don't you get in touch with the solar farm industry here? Let's see what they propose. Not that we have to adopt it, we may want to lie down, but see what they propose. And let's use that as, as a building block if we will. And, and we can come to some kind of agreement. Like I said, the other alternative is, we've got three solar farms, and guess what? They're out of the box. And we're just saying to others, no, we're, that's it. So we're stuck in a agreement that could, could walk away and we'd be stuck with it. But if we have something that's workable, we may even have them to agree to comply with it. And I would like to see that. That it would be, you know, our ordinance is such that the ones that are here, as, hey, any expansion or where we can currently comply without, you know, disturbing permanent fixtures or whatever, will comply with, you know, you'll, 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 solar farm ordinance. So, you know, this is something that we like to incorporate with them so that this would be something we can have them agree to as well, because they're already here.
Any comments from anyone else?
This is up to public hearing.
Yeah, it's up to public hearing, to review the draft ordinance in July, I mean, August third.
It's not going to be August.
The board, I would ask that.
The newspaper wasn't going to be able to run it this week.
Well, why don't we ask them to bring us some language in lieu of the current bond or a letter of credit, the twenty-five percent bond? Can't you bring us some, some language in lieu of that, so if you have some options?
Uh, I'm going to speak. I've spoken to a couple of planning board members and other citizens who have been to various meetings. And I guess the question would be, what if the planning board stands by this? This is what they return to you for the next public hearing?
Well, I wouldn't look for it. I'm going to tell you, it stands right now, but, because basically, all you're saying is, hey, we're shutting the door. We're shutting the door to, to other companies, and, and the people we've got here, if they walk away, they're walking, they can walk away from it.
Well, they can walk away anyway, because you can't make it retroactive.
Well, it's not retroactive, but any time, what we found is that if you will have an ordinance that's workable, that they will agree to comply with it. And that's what you would want.
Well, I mean, it doesn't affect the agreement already here.
Sure.
Because I mean, so, I mean, they are here.
Now, but they can agree, we can get an agreement, they would, they would comply with the ordinance.
They are really in compliance with the ordinance that was affected at the time.
They're not going to update their laws.
Well, they're, again, it is so alporantish that they, they can't comply. You know, the only thing that I see is maybe, you know, some of the buffers or something, they may not be in compliance with that. But as Jack said, you know, the one companies, they're, they're willing to move their boundary lines back. They could even.
But they can't move them too far because the pot solar panels are right there, unless they take them down.
They just don't know moving. They'll move something.
Well, I think you need to leave an option open for our citizens to have the opportunity to do with their property what they like to do with it instead of just arbitrarily putting requirements in place that solar industry has already told you that, hey, it's not workable. And, and solar energy is, is the future right now.
The issue for us is, okay, you said that the public hearing is scheduled for August third, but cannot be August third. We do not have a. We do not have a second August meeting.
I would, I would like to say one thing. The planning board is a recommended body. If, and I'm just saying, if, if it comes down to something that y'all would like to remove here. There are five people up here, it's up to you guys, you five people, to say, we want to remove this, and everybody vote in man, in manlessly, or however, and it's removed.
Well, definitely, we're telling them, we're just telling them, get some options.
But I mean, I would need a vote on it, I mean, or something.
But it's difficult, I will agree, it is difficult. Because you, the, the planning board has discussed, investigated, and they made this recommendation. It's difficult to go back, time after time after time, and come back to something different. If we're not going to vote, if we don't like what we see, then, and not trying to take it out of your hands, but I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, we, if we, if we don't like that, and, and I agree, I don't, I don't like that decommissioning part. And we need to, to come up with something that we think is suitable, and one of us present it, and we'll, we'll vote on it. So Natalie, let me ask you, would it be improper for us to ask you to contact Sun Energy One and ask them, tell them that we are dealing with the decommissioning aspect of our ordinance? And see what they have to say about it?
I believe they provided that information at the planning board, didn't they?
They just, they just provided two copies of, well, copy of the ordinance from Gashcombe and a copy of the ordinance from Northampton.
Yeah, Northampton.
Do you remember, so we didn't adopt that, cut and paste?
No.
What, so what, do you recall what our issue was with that?
In term, well, I mean, when they came to town, the only thing they commented about was the twenty-five percent. In which I told them, the twenty-five percent was not set by the planning board. From my understanding, it was set by, it was put in here, changed from the fifteen percent by the Board of Climate Commissioners. We can't, we don't go and, the planning board does not go and change something that the town commissioners have changed. We just go, we made the recommendation of fifteen percent, it was changed to twenty-five percent. We can't take it back down or remove it or whatever. You can, you guys can reverse yourself, but we can't reverse you.
Well, even if we did do that, we were probably, at the time, maybe being overly cautious. I'm not saying we did not have a business property, and we may have. We may have said, well, let's make it twenty-five percent, I don't know. But now that we know some of the facts, let me read your statement from Sun Energy. Sun Energy said, "It is simply financially prohibitive for a solar company to maintain bonds that amount to millions of dollars each year over the life of the solar facility. We are open to ensuring the bonds are available to decommission a site at the end of its life. However, the amount being required in Gates County is exponentially higher than what we have seen in any other solar ordinance." All I'm saying, what we're saying, is let's see what they're proposing. If they come back with fifty percent, and that's what is a normal industry standard, then certainly, we could approve that. You know, just because we, you know, may have changed our mind, or may have stayed at the point previously, we have the attitude also to, to change now. So that's what we're asking to do, is let's find out what is, what does this statement mean? "We are open to ensuring funds are available to decommission a site at the end of its life. However, the amount being required in Gates County is exponentially higher than what we have seen in other solar ordinance." Let's see what, what do they propose? And I think that's a fair assessment.
If we don't agree with it, then we can.
Absolutely. But, you know, as it stands right now, all we're doing is we shut it down. We got three, we opened the door, we're stuck with them, and they can do whatever they want. And we're not allowing anyone else to come in.
Ma'am Chairman, I may, would that be out, would that be out of order?
I'm not in agreement with just contacting one company. But that's what I'm going to do by majority of the board, and that's what I would do.
Because we, first of all, we have two solar companies in the county. What is it, O two? O two. So they're not all three by Sun Energy. I don't think you should put all your eggs on one company.
Well, uh.
It's up to them.
And I don't, do not recall the twenty-five percent.
I don't either.
I don't recall that at all.
So really, hey, let me ask the board, would we be proposing drafting a letter and submitting it to however many people who have ever applied on the decommissioning issue? Or would we rather just do a little more detailed investigation into what we know exists in other counties?
Why don't we have the county manager seek out the, the two solar energy companies that the company gave them? I think we should have got two of the counties, I like.
Two different companies, yes.
Two different companies. Two different companies and maybe even another. And, and bring that information back as to what the decommissioning security is, is normally used. And see how best worded. In order to, to make it, uh, workable in these. To provide a motion or direction.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we request our county manager contact the two known solar companies that are interested in Gates County. Both names have been mentioned. To request a, um, a decommissioning statement to be considered for our solar farm ordinance.
Okay, a motion has been made to request that the county manager contact the two existing solar energy companies in Gates County, Sun Energy and O two, for a decommissioning statement. Is that?
For consideration.
For consideration.
And, and security, uh, and security, uh, methods.
You mentioned, I was going to, you know, make a suggestion as to, or is there to, rather than a request to obtain?
Request to obtain.
And when, and you, when you first said to contact them to request, to replace that to obtain.
Request to obtain.
No, no, not request. Strike request and replace it with to obtain.
To obtain. Okay, a motion has.
I'll, I'll, I'll just.
Okay, to obtain from the two known solar energy companies in the county, Sun Energy and O two, a decommissioning statement for consideration.
And security plan, uh, security.
And security plan. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion has been made, a second, any discussion?
I have a problem asking the governor to write an ordinance to change. And things are going to get everything out of there, things will be elsewhere. And it's, to just comment on the word of change, if they don't want us to, so, do not want to reply to, no, then she can't do what she's been mandated to do. She can't force them to do. But anyway, I, I just, I have a problem with asking the governor, I just want to do this, what's the best way for you?
Well, I, I don't think that's what I'm hoping you're asking. We're basically finding out what is the normal process and obtainance of a decommissioned plan that has a security provision. And we're not, we don't, we're not obligated to accept it, but certainly we can take a look at, go.
Well, I know, or, excuse me. I know, I have to help commissioners in our region, northeastern North Carolina, and all of them have said that they wish that they had been stricter in their regulations than they were. And, um, so, when you look at their plans, most of them have said that they were not, not pleased the way it's worked out.
Well, can we say the same thing? We can have a plan.
That's right, that's why I'm here.
Well, exactly. But the plan that we're putting in place, it needs to be a workable plan, not, not an overkill. And I think that's all they're trying to do. We're not, I don't think we're going to disagree, I just think that we're just trying to come together on the fact that how much do we need? And all we're going to know that is find out what is actually practical.
And, you know, the further discussion and, and the comment with Commissioner Felton is, is obtaining is, each one of those companies must have their own plans and their own procedures. And, and rather than us adopting them, we just need to look at what they have in their records to show that they're going to move decommission wise to whoever their lender is, or whoever their financial factor is, or whoever is, is maintaining their liabilities. And one of those companies owns the property, he's going to take care of it, he's going to do it his best advantage. The other one is just a leasing, and went no longer to come properly, or he's going to walk away.
Okay, a motion is before us, it's been properly second, is any public discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll come for the vote, I guess we need a show of hands. All those for this amendment or this request to obtain funds from two known solar energy companies in Gates County, Sun Energy and O two, for a decommissioning statement for consideration and a security plan? Uh, raise your hand, right hand? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, the, the motion passed. Now I can get to the problem is looking at a sequence and time. So, what, you know, if you look, there was, cannot have a public hearing on August third because we do not have a plan. We cannot have, and a moratorium expires on the nineteenth. So, what are we going to do?
We can run an ad, um, talked to Melissa earlier today, and, um, we can run an ad to, want to cover, um, well, the ad will cover the adoption of the ordinance section or a moratorium. And if we find that you don't, you know, that way we are covered on both ends. So, if you find you need to do an extension to a moratorium, it's already advertised, if you're ready to adopt, you can go with the adoption. That's about the only options we have.
I think we look at an extension. For the information.
I, I, I think I would entertain a motion for the extension to the moratorium because we're not going to have to go by the nineteenth. Not the way the, because we don't have such a meeting this month. We only have one meeting, first week of August.
No, but we would have, y'all would have to have a special meeting.
For, yeah, we'll need to extend the moratorium.
Yeah, because either way, we're going to.
I have time, so I got you.
You were saying that between now, you can advertise for the extension, you request the extension, right, you don't have enough time?
No, because it would need to run this week and next week for the August third meeting because it can't run the week of the meeting.
Because we need on Wednesday, the paper comes out.
Right, right. On Wednesday, and you can't advertise the week of the meeting anyway, even if the paper came out on Tuesday, you can't advertise the week of the meeting. It has to be two consecutive weeks prior to the actual hearing date.
Okay, so we need to run an advertisement for a moratorium extension.
And we'll do.
A hearing.
Would be, y'all feel, because we, I, I don't think we.
It'll need a thirty day extension.
Okay, we have, but, okay, if we run the advertisement next week and the next week, we could have it on the Monday night of the fifteenth, a, um, special board meeting for the extension. And that would be ahead of the nineteenth. Do I have a motion that we, um, pass a motion to, uh, extend the moratorium and advertise for a public hearing on that issue on August the fifteenth?
Should I make that motion?
It's, what time?
Second, uh. Six, six thirty, February third.
Six thirty.
But how long do you like the extension to the advertisement, for thirty days, sixty days?
Nine days.
Nine?
Okay, the motion's been made, ninety, is this the second in agreement?
Second, this one.
Okay, special. Any discussion?
No discussion, just a company will rule that quarter that day, to the right chair, fifteenth of August.
Okay, what time does court adjourn?
General is at seven, ten, hundred.
At five o'clock. He's trying, he's trying to trick me, but he said it's superior in court.
It's superior court, because chances we may have to be here three days.
So, Sheriff Webb, in your expert.
It's usually, the judge usually has it by six.
Okay.
They travel away, so I think since probably would be, would be safe by then.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay, six thirty. So, the motion that Commissioner Felton has made is to have hold a special meeting, um, August fifteenth at six thirty, um, for the extension of the moratorium for ninety days. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second has been made, any discussion? And we're doing this so that we have, we don't have to keep coming back. It's, I'll tie it up by then. Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the school status project. County, uh, County Commissioner Jordan wanted to know what the status was. What? All right, we'll have a short break, five minutes. I settle, and, um, the school status project, status of school project.
Madam Chairman, I ask for this to be added because I talked with the election office, and August the twentieth is the deadline for us to be able to, uh, request a referendum to have citizens in the county to vote on whether or not to have, uh, an increase in taxes to pay for, uh, building a new middle school. And it is July eighteenth. One of the things we passed, the finance officer and the county manager, was to come back with us with the, uh, process of how to initiate a bond and, and the approval of, I guess, LG, LGC on, uh, of what the process is for borrowing money, uh, so that we could instruct the Board of Education on what they could ask for in their request for an election, or petition for an election, uh, to build new schools. And our next meeting is August the third. And if we don't have that information by August the third, then we could very well use the date to have that on the referendum, uh, for our November the eighth election. And, uh, I think it's important that our citizens weigh in on this. I don't think this needs to be a decision arbitrarily made by the citizens, by just Board of Commissioners to, uh, to borrow eighteen million dollars and, uh, without the citizens being put on it. So I think it's very important that, uh, we have a status on where we are right now and come down to ask if you would provide that for the board.
We're still collecting information, and as we've discussed before, uh, I perceive information has been shared with everyone, from Karen Ronzi stating that what the school had asked for and rescinded was the supplemental tax. And then that even if that was voted on by the people, which it has been, if it was passed, what's the school bond, if that's what was chosen to use that money for, was paid off, they can still request that money each year, so it could be a continual tax that did not expire after a bond was paid for. We're still talking with LGC, Ms. Pittman has some more questions that she would like some clarification and answers to. And we talked with USDA, we have not heard back from the qualified school construction bond yet, so we do not know the status of that, six million dollars.
So can we expect to have something, uh?
You'll have it by, by your August third meeting. We've just had some internal issues that's prevented us getting this information as quickly as what we had hoped.
And has the school really finalized their numbers?
No, I provided you with all of that information last time concerning the wide range of numbers that we received concerning the construction of different school buildings.
Well, I don't know if we're speaking, they've not.
That was the number they had provided in their, um, information that they rescinded.
Yeah, the, the numbers said like eighteen to twenty-two, something.
Well, no, they had a quote of twelve million, but when they provided us with that first information for the supplemental tax, they did say eighteen million.
Well, I thought the twelve million was along with the USCB bond.
No, sir, and one of the quotes that they had received, it was a twelve million dollar. There was also, I believe, a couple of seventeen million dollars, then there was an eighteen million dollar quote, and then I provided you information with some, several schools that have been built recently across the state. For example, Colville County, a ninety thousand square foot building for fourteen million.
Uh, what we want from them, they've given it to us, they've said eighteen million dollars. I don't think we are the ones to decide. You know, they decided, they designed, and the amount it's going to take to build a school, you know, that's not for us to decide.
But they can really, excuse me, but that, that was in the, um, resolution that they rescinded?
Well, they rescinded a resolution, uh, because we were asking for a fifty cent tax increase, which would have been more than eighteen million dollars. What we're looking at now is, based on the fact of what LGC was approved, if LGC says, if you borrow eighteen million dollars, county can only finance that for up to thirty years. And then we need to go to some banks or bond companies that, all right, based on our credit, uh, can you provide us this loan or this bond? And that's the information we're looking for, if they can provide, and what is the interest rate, and, and what is the annual payment something, so that we can give it to the Board of Education. Then they can give us a request for, a petition to request, uh, an election, and then we will write a resolution to the Board of Elections requesting it to be on the referendum in November.
I think there's a, a lot of options out there, and I think we don't, we can't say that tonight, but let's wait for August third meeting and see what the school government, I mean, the school government, the local.
The local government commission.
The thing, like I'm saying, August the twentieth is, is a drop, that's the, the drop date date. If you don't have it in by August the twentieth, then you're not going to be able to get a referendum. So, in essence, we're going to have.
Well, we could get on the election, right?
No, you can't have a special, I mean, it's a way that it was changed, so you have to do it when there's a general election.
When we left our meeting with Board of Education, was, was Sam, was she supposed to be getting some numbers for us?
We've been working on that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think she was out there today, right? She'll be back for me.
Uh, so you said.
But that's, that's what we need. And I think all the boards are aware that there's some latitude where as you could implement a pack to cover that, but it's not desired to do that without having citizens input.
Oh, I, certainly we want to be transparent, we want the citizens, uh, the reform citizens of what's going on. Certainly, I don't think any of us would disagree that we want to have it all very transparent above board, and everybody knows in the county what is the, um, facts and figures. Okay, but we'll look for that report in, from August the third. Okay, uh, we have, going to new business, uh, we have a piece of property that we had advertised and had sealed bids for. As you see in your notes, uh, we, the unsealed bids and Bundy Logging Company had a bid of thirty-three hundred dollars for the, um, the proposed water facility, land in the title of Gatesville. And what we have to do today is to, um, approve or voiding that property.
We make a motion that we approve this, this sealed bid for the property by, by the law.
Second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, second, any, um, comments?
It's the only one, right?
Yes, it's only one, and it's. It's only one, and it's like a third of an acre, you know, it's not.
I believe it's less than a third of an acre.
Yeah.
Eighty-two hundred, actually.
What?
Eighty-two hundred. Does the landlord, he's a landlord, except for.
And it's in there. Okay, a motion's been made in properly second that we award the bid to Bundy Logging. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, they have bought themselves a piece of property. Okay, I, the next item is surplus request, um, from the Department of Social Services. They have 21 office chairs that they would like to put on Gov.DI deals with open bid based upon similar surplus. What is the pleasure of the board?
Ma'am Chairman, I move that we approve that request.
Okay, a bunch has been made. I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, second has been made that we approve and authorize Department of Social Services to advertise 21 office chairs, 19 black vinyl and two fabric covered chairs on Gov.DI deals. All the, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And anybody interested in chairs, there's a deal on Gov.DI that you can get. Okay, um, library board appointments. We have, um, the library director, Teresa Cole, has, uh, the director of the Avamo Regional Library, has asked that Marva Bond and Renee Kittle be reappointed to the Gates County Library Board of Trustees.
And if I may clarify, this is for the local and regional board.
Okay, so local and regional.
Ma'am Chairman, I make a motion to both be appointed to the Avamo Regional Library as, as a letter from Teresa Cole.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made to reappoint Marva Bond and Renee Kittle to the local and regional Avamo Library Board. Uh, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so they have been appointed. Okay, Gates Partners of, of Health is requesting a, um, for a representative for their board.
Ma'am Chairman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
For, for our Commissioner Owens to be reappointed to that position.
Okay, a recommendation is from Commissioner Freeman to reappoint Commissioner Owens to that board.
Second.
Uh, here, a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you, Jack. We're taking one for the team. Okay, personnel board, um, recommendations. Okay, and this is from the Personnel Board, make the following recommendations, we're doing one at a time. First one is a reclassification of DSS Accounting Technician 2 position. And the current employee is Administrative Officer 1 with a salary rating of 18, step 1, to be effective August 1st, 2016.
Uh, Captain, what is the, what is the salary range for 18?
I have to open that, it'll take a moment.
It was here for what the state, I mean, what the state.
An 18, step 1 is $30,020. And then the upper range for step 20 is $43,734.
Where's the court staff, uh, the, oh, this is just a new.
This is a new position.
If you look at the organization chart, the, um.
She's currently an accounting technician 2, and this is a reclassification based on a discussion that they've had with the HHS concerning the duties that this person holds at Gates County DSS.
I guess what I'm getting to is their salaries substantially lower than what 18 1 would be right now.
That position's at a totally different grade. It's a grade, if I remember correctly, it's a grade 16, and the starting salary is $27,205.
But she was getting an increase?
Yes, because she's moving grades.
It's like, so, like, a couple times.
You want 10 to 18.
Yeah. But she has a response, a lot of response, though.
Ma'am Chairman, this is a recommendation from our Personnel Committee.
Right.
I move that we accept the recommendation.
Second motion.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, that one.
No, no, maybe you have to refer to job description, which I guess technically we should have done first.
Ma'am Chairman.
Yes.
I have seen the job description, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the job description as it is before us.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the job, uh, description for Administrative Officer Number 1. Um, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, second's been made. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, do we have any comments?
No comments, just an observation. Um, looking at the table of organization, I see that one particular employee has a job of supervisor of a section, and then a job in a section. Is that just a?
Yeah, I think that was just not a change we made.
Right, that position's been filled recently.
Yeah, but it's different name.
Okay, um, do any citizens sign up? No citizens signed up. Okay, Commissioners' comments, starting with Commissioner Freeman.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. We certainly appreciate everyone in attendance. Uh, did see that I had one from, from my particular area, Commissioner Felton usually beats me. But I did want to say that, uh, just listening and, and watching and, and observing as we observe and the calls we get, that, uh, we see Gates County is, uh, is growing and is changing. Uh, the responsibility rests with, uh, with this group, with what you bring forward to us and the telephone calls and the letters that you send us. As you see, we do disagree to agree. Uh, and that is a very fortunate thing to have such good folks working with one another up here, and I appreciate that. We evaluate the drawbacks and we evaluate the benefits. So, uh, with the visions you bring to us, uh, with the intentions that you tell us helps us with those decisions. So thank you.
Henry, I wasn't going to lie tonight. Great convention. I've got two and a half again. Appreciate all of you coming, appreciate all the support, all the interest of everybody coming out, and as Ray said, we don't always agree, but it's okay. Just keep on coming, bring friends with you.
I'd actually like to thank everyone for coming, and really, I do have to make a little bit tonight. I'm well represented to Sunbury tonight. I have two that's remaining and a half of three, I think, that left earlier.
You can't count them.
Hold it, you can't count a couple of those who are on my side.
Correct.
Look at Bosley Road, I think.
We did thank our citizens for the input. We do not forget that we do work with citizens in this county. We have great employees in the county, and we try to give them the direction that we build this, kind of bring about the best wheel for the county. So we hear, we get those phone calls, and we do hear you, and we respond to you.
Oh, yes. We do get those phone calls, and we, and, uh, we learn something when we get over. Amen. Um, it's good to see everybody. Billy, I will let you explain two and a half to me after the meeting.
So I'll explain that as when she, we, I, she says she technically lives in Gatesville, but I can't explain a half.
Well, I, I thought you'd count periods, a half. And so there we go, correction. Anyway, it's good to, it's good to be here with our citizens and with my colleagues up here, and, uh, it takes a lot to put this meeting together, a lot of research and dedication. And, uh, I thank Natalie and her staff for putting it together and presenting it in the manner that they do. And I'd like to thank our chairperson for conducting a, a good dialogue. Every time we meet, we have to do a dialogue. It's good to see everybody here.
I too, a lot of thank you all for coming, and it's important to, we have people interested in county business. I do have one who stayed all the time, and I appreciate my neighbor, Mr. Parker. I did have a couple of those that were on Bosley Road that are also technically in my area as well. But anyway, I think you can see the difference between, um, Gates County and the nation as a whole. We can, uh, have a discussion and be civil and with friends, and everybody doesn't have to think a lot. And from differences of opinion, we can get, like, the best of what, you know, we can come to the better solution, or the best solution that we can possibly can work out. And I have enjoyed working with each gentleman, and, um, I look forward to continuing to work with them. And yes, keep all the phone calls coming and letters and stopping me at church and, um, the Dollar General or Family Dollar or wherever. And I guess we have the Chinese restaurant coming soon, that we might be able to stop those, somebody can buttonhole a slur.
Get T-bone.
So, uh, thank you for coming. Um, at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143-318, a loving ad that's legal, keeping on the development of real estate and personnel. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Motion's been made, and, so, okay, all those in favor say aye. Do we need to take a short break?
I think, uh.
Yeah, three minutes.
Stretch for three minutes. I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Move. Second.
Motion's been made in private second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Um, we, a motion, I want to offer a motion to repay property taxes on my acquired property from the Commissioners miscellaneous line item.
So move.
Second. Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.